Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak under item C. Citizens may be given an opportunity to speak during discussion of items listed on the agenda and are allowed three minutes for comments. Disruptive discussion or profanity will not be allowed. We'll call officers.
King.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Streeter.
Here.
Stutz.
Here.
Will.
Stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Always sounds better with a lot of people here. Citizens for dispassion, citizens are to address the board only. Statements are limited to three minutes. The board may not respond to items not listed on the agenda, however, you may ask for an item be placed on future agendas. Any citizens wishing to be heard? Announcements, communications?
I'll just remind the board, we've been having some phone calls about microphones to make sure that they're pulled up close to your speaking and that they're turned on.
I had one thing, last night, North Fond du Lac meeting, or North Fond du Lac Committee met and decided we're gonna try one more year, go year by year. So if there's anybody that's interested in jumping on that committee, we're looking for volunteers. So we are gonna, we're gonna secure, we'll get into YOLOs again, right? So they'll be playing again next summer, so. So then you can contact me and I can get you information, or else you can call Jerry, Sherry Digner is the president, yeah?
Can I add also that it's gonna just be a nighttime event again?
Another nighttime event, yeah.
Not gonna be a whole day event at this point, so.
Any other announcements, communications? All right, President's Business and Staff Reports, Library, Heather.
Thank you. I guess I have a lot of the same to report as I did last time, which we're in the process, we have our storytime started. We also have the on-track readers meeting. We met this past Saturday, so we invite people to join us for that. And I've been just working on the budget presentation that I'll be giving tonight. And also, if you want to check out our reliable reader review, that's on our Facebook page, in case you want to check that out. And I also want to emphasize that it is library signup month, so if you want to encourage people who don't know about the library, if they don't have a library card, please encourage them to come to the library and get a card and see what we have to offer. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Municipal Court, you have nothing?
No, no, great.
Administrator.
Thank you. As has been the case for quite a while now, I continue to work on the budget. Tonight, we're talking library and public works, and then after this, we have a lot of, I would say, more smaller miscellaneous type budgets with revenues, debt service, TIF, outdoor rec. So that the next meeting, we'll probably talk about most of those and start to paint the picture of how the entire budget looks for the general fund. So we'll continue to go through that. Darren and I met last week with, down at the emergency management with Fond du Lac County to discuss the cleanup from the storms we had a couple weeks ago now. It looks like there's a good chance that the county will be, receive FEMA funding based on the amount of damage we had throughout the county, which would be a good thing for the village. If the county gets FEMA funding throughout the whole county, we're kind of all under the same umbrella for funding. If they, if it doesn't go that route and it goes to more of the state declaring that, then we wouldn't meet those limits. So depending on where that goes, we had about $10,000 or $12,000 of expenses here at the village that we can calculate at least. Met with outdoor rec last Wednesday to talk about the next steps at the Village Park. As you all are aware, we put the new fencing up this spring, early this spring, and there's still phases to follow that, mainly the lighting is being the next step. And we're just kind of working through that process right now, looking how to approach that. Last week, I also attended the Lakeside Municipal Court Executive Review Committee on Thursday morning. That's where all of the jurisdictions come and they have an executive review, updated them in the budget processing where we're at, and continue to work on some economic development issues. And that's all I have.
All right. Nick, do you have any idea how much lighting, how much costs are looking at?
There's been some guesses thrown out there of $100,000, $200,000, but we, that's kind of the process, that's the point we're at right now, is coming up with a plan, to come up with a number so we can possibly apply for a grant.
And that's just the east, I mean, the lights are fine at the west end?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Police Department, Darren.
Thank you. I continue to work on the 2019 budget. Later on in the agenda, we have an item that, we'll be discussing that a little bit more in depth. Last Wednesday, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the City of Fond du Lac Public Safety Training Center. Looking forward to them having that thing finished. They've invited us to utilize it when we need, which will obviously be a huge benefit, so it'll save us a lot of travel time. And I also made our monthly appearance on Behind the Badge last week. We talked about school zones and cars slowing down in the school zones. That's all I have.
Thanks, Darren. Fire your MS, Jake.
Thank you. We do have an MSAC meeting this Thursday that I will be going to. Main topic of discussion there will obviously be the per capita and we'll get those numbers out to the townships. I did also attend the groundbreaking ceremony in the city, and as Darren said, it'll be a great asset for our county to have that building there. So that's all I have.
When's the NSAC meeting on Thursday? Where's that?
Tunnel Lambertine at 6:30 PM.
All right, thanks. All right, thank you. Public Works, Darren.
Thanks, Mike. Crew's been busy the last week. We dug up a sewer in the 400 block, a sewer lateral in the 400 block of Illinois Avenue that resident had been experiencing some blockage with. Finished that in a timely manner, still need to do the asphalt work there. The crew has also been working on some drainage issue problems. We did one in the, behind the 400 block of Wisconsin Avenue, kind of behind 432 Prospect. Did some ditching back there that should help a couple residents with yard drainage. Last Thursday, some of the crew, along with Mitch and myself, attended annual refresher training, and the remainder of the crew will be doing their annual refresher training next week, I believe. And then I've been busy, along with working on budget, I've been busy working with the Fond du Lac County Emergency Management, getting our costs of debris cleanup and work that we've done with flooding and stuff like that, so they can turn it into FEMA. That's pretty much what I have.
Thank you. Moving down to the consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the following village board meeting from 10th of September 2018, and approve invoices and authorize checks to be drawn on respective funds.
Just make a comment that the checks, you, I handed out an updated version of that. What we sent out last week was, it had three invoices in it that were not actually the village of North Fond du Lac from one of our vendors, so those are removed. That's the only change.
Okay. So the one I have here is accurate?
The one that I always printed on.
Gotcha. All right, $310.20, outdoor rec, $40.80. Library Fund, $2,881.33. EMS Fund, $1,698.56. Capital Projects, $1,485.75. Water Department, $8,359.65. Waste Water Department, $3,097.28. Community Development Authority, TIF, $40.22. Storm Water Fund, $2,429.85, for a grand total of $72,343.64. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
You got a second?
I second that.
Got a motion by Will, second by Price, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any questions, discussion?
I got one for the, for the, I guess for the library, that gas line, what was it, kind of cares what happened over $1,500 bucks?
That building used to be two separate facilities, and a client came to do an update on the gas service, and with it being one building, we can only have one service coming in there. So we had to connect the two furnace rooms together under one service.
Exactly what you're calling on. We just went through that, so, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mike? Anybody else? All right, so no more questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Administrative discussion and possible action on 2019 police department vehicle replacement.
Thank you. So there was a background in your packets. I'm also gonna pack, pass around real quickly two spreadsheets for our capital improvement plan, the five-year plan. If you look, the first one has a date in the lower right-hand corner of August 2nd. That was the one that was presented to you back on August 20th, when I presented our budget. And then the second one has a date of September 14th. This is obviously the first time you're seeing that one. So, couple of things to note on those. First, in 2018, if you recall, when we originally presented the budget, we were looking at switching to the Rhino Tab MBC, which would have been an increase in the cost. We have since decided that we're not going to do that, we're gonna stick with the Panasonic Toughbooks. So if you look at the September 14th dated one, you'll see that that budget has come back down now from $22,000 to $14,000. Those have been ordered, so that is what we are actually going to be spending this year. Then if you also look at just very small change, the capital improvement plan for 2019, the original vehicle cost in there was $31,761. You'll see that that's now down to $31,376. When I presented the budget the first time, I didn't have an actual quote from the dealership, but we have received that quote now, and so that accounts for that small change in the dollar amount. So to get to the item that we're supposed to be discussing tonight, Ford has announced that they're going to be doing a very short window for rebuilds on squad, the Ford interceptors, the squad car that we currently utilize. They're going to be shutting down production in February of next year. They're doing a revamp to all of those cars, and so they're going to be completely shutting down their facilities, changing everything over for the new interceptors that'll be coming out then late in 2019. As part of that, they've announced a final order due date of September 21st, this Friday. In other words, if we're going to be getting a squad car in 2019, we need to place the order by the end of this week, or they won't accept the order. It doesn't change anything in terms of what we have talked about spending in the past, and even though they're requesting or requiring that the orders be placed now, we would not be invoiced until after the first of the year. So I'm not asking for money now, what I'm doing is asking for permission to go ahead and place the order ahead of the final order date. When you look down at the options, and particularly the fiscal impact, as I already mentioned, there wouldn't be any change to the 2019 budget because it isn't any additional cost. That money was already proposed in my initial budget. And then the other thing is, if we end up saying we're not going to do that, and we either end up switching squads, or we wait for that rebuild, there's a, more than a small chance that we're going to end up having to purchase all-new equipment to outfit that squad car. So going with this gets us another year of just transitioning the equipment from the car that we have to the new squad, and it would also allow us to replace the car without any sort of waiting period.
Anybody here, any questions?
I guess I've got a couple. So you're buying an SUV again, right?
I'm sorry, what?
We're gonna be buying an SUV again, right?
Correct.
So would we be replacing SUV, because we had the standard one without the hatchback or something originally, so is that car gone?
We have one sedan left that is unmarked. So that unmarked would become the trade-in next year, and the, and SUV would be getting rolled out of the marked fleet into an unmarked vehicle.
And that might never go into that car.
So, correct.
Haven't we had a lot of trouble with those cars? I mean, it seems like we've had a lot of model service, those interceptors?
Initially, when we first, when they first came out with them, the first year, which if you recall, when we got it, there was, by virtue of the timeframe that they released the vehicle, 2013, if you, at the end of 2012, they were rolling out 2013s, and then again in 2013, they were rolling out 2013s. There were electrical issues in that first rollout. They have since corrected those issues, and it hasn't been nearly what it used to be.
I think I've asked this before, but just to refresh my memory, is the warranty on these things, being commercially used, do they honor the, like the $36,000?
Yes, yep.
Bumper to bumper on those?
Yep.
Thank you.
So Darren, with the revamping of that vehicle, there's a possibility that we might have to purchase new equipment, like when we went from the cars to the SUVs?
Yeah, and I, and I can't say that that is going to be the case, or it's not going to be the case. My guess is that it will probably require some changes. That's one of the things that, to be honest with you, law enforcement community isn't really excited about this, because it's the first time in a long time that we've been able to continue to just swap equipment from one vehicle to the next. They haven't done that redesign, so to speak. Ford has indicated that the, both of those police models, the sedan is built on a Taurus frame, and the SUV is built on the Explorer frame. So because they haven't done a revamp, that means that the retail market for those vehicles hasn't seen any redesign in five years. And according to Ford, that's really bad business for a car dealer. People like to see new stuff as the vehicles, as they come out with the new models. So my guess is that it would require some changes, things like the backseats, the prisoner seats that we put in, as well as the cages and the rollbars. I'm guessing that those things would all have to end up being swapped out.
Is Ford the only one that's making anything now, or does?
Dodge still makes the Charger. I think that's it, though. I think those are the only two police vehicles that are out there.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
There used to be the Impala, used to be one, right?
Years ago, yeah, and it was the Chevy Caprice was actually the longest-running one, but Chevy got out of it quite some time ago. At that time, the left Ford is the only one doing a police package, and then Dodge jumped back on the bandwagon.
Dodge doesn't have an SUV type, does it?
I'm sorry?
Dodge doesn't have an SUV type?
No, no. Chevy will outfit their Tahoe, but it's not a true police package. They'll, they'll put wiring in it and things like that, but it's not built as a police vehicle.
Any other questions or comments? What's the board's pleasure on this item?
I think, just if I could interject here, basically what we're looking for is a commitment from the board at this point without passing the entire capital budget to go ahead and order it, and then with doing that, we would expect that when we get to the capital budget adoption, that this $31,376 would be included in that.
Okay, thanks. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordering of the placement squad car by the 21st.
You got a second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion by King, second by Stutz, to approve ordering the 2019 police department vehicle this Friday. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Thank you.
Thanks. Discussion on, number two, discussion on public works and library budgets.
I guess I didn't give it much thought who's going, I could probably go ahead and get the library.
You can go, yeah. Another, if you want to go first here.
That'd be welcome.
All right. Well, I had initially created a PowerPoint, so I just printed the slides off when Nick told me that we'd have to kind of have you all shift to see a screen, and then it might be kind of awkward. So I decided just, just to print the slides off from the PowerPoint presentation on the budget and library service overview for this year. So forgive me if I'm repeating some of the things you already know, but I think it's important with a couple new members that I just kind of go over some things, and hopefully then you'll gain a little bit of a good understanding of what we are, what our mission is, and why we're there, and all the good things that we have to offer. So I'll try to make it as fast as possible, so I don't drag it out, but I want to just make sure that I'm thorough about it, so. To begin, our mission is to serve all the residents of the village of North Fond du Lac and the outlying areas, and by providing a balanced collection of print and non-print resources reflecting the educational, informational, and recreational needs of the community. So the resources and services, obviously books and materials like movies, CDs, audiobooks, large print. We have over 21,000 books in print in our library, and also we have overdrive right now, and that's electronic. And with eBooks, we have 170,000, over 170,000 books available through, through that. So, and nearly 50,000 e-audio downloads. So our holdings aren't necessarily just the physical stuff in our building. And if system holdings of the 30 libraries that we're associated with aren't enough for you, we also do interlibrary loans for people, and I get things from other, other libraries if it's not available. We also have internet, obviously, and wireless access in the library, and faxing service, and also scanning now is a big thing, kind of taking the place of a lot of faxing. It's a little bit easier, you can do the faxing, or I mean scanning, and then you can hook that onto your email easily. So we've got that actually hooked to a public station at the library, so it's a really nice feature for people to use. Online resources, so these are available 24/7 for people, and there's an auto repair reference center, there's consumer reports, there's a tech skills center. So people can, you know, work on a lot of things that you might want to know, anything with Word or PowerPoint, or I would like to spend some time doing some of that, just to freshen some of the skills up with that. There's also research, you know, there's links to full-text articles, and what's new is they have these GALE courses, and I'm kind of excited about those. They have, you can learn languages, the Excel, the webpages, learning how to put together a webpage. You can do things with accounting and finance, business, like medical, you can do medical terminology, you could do anatomy, you could learn how to be a vet assistant through some of these classes online, and administrative assistants. That's something totally new. So if you want to check that out, go to our research tab, and it's the featured resource. So you can click on that, and you can browse through all the different offerings that they have through that. So it's, it's pretty amazing. I'm really excited about, I haven't had a chance to, you know, kind of check it out, but it's really valuable. So I think just about everybody, you might have something you'd want to learn about. All right, so we also have a lot of events and groups that come into the library. We have our summer reading program events, obviously, our class visits. This past week, we had our, I think our biggest group of kids in the library at one time. We had 62 children. Mr. Score came in with some sixth graders, so we had 62 of them in the library at one time. We also do the storytimes, the family nights, the special events, wordsmith writers club, knitting club, coupon club hasn't been meeting so much, but group painting we have coming up, and then we have the Girl Scouts actually over there right now. So we have a lot of partnerships. The work, training, and careers class from the high school comes over once every other week, and I keep them busy for a good hour. There's six of them, so they help us with some things. We do the Santa night with the police department, the North Fond du Lac pool for a finale, and the library staff has a total of, full-time equivalent of 2.62, okay? So that's the director at 40, the library aide at 40, the children's librarian at 25, except for the six weeks of the summer reading program when things get pretty intense. For the staff experience, I've been there over 10 years, our children's librarian has been there 14, and our library aide has been there 16. So combined, over 40 years of experience. You can read our job descriptions if you'd like. I, mine actually is four pages if you want to see the full one. And then our library board, of course, is here tonight, and I appreciate them. And there's a member, a seven-member board, and plus our county supervisor, who Mike Will is on as well. And they just help make decisions for the library, help us to keep things on track for our vision. And how's the library funded? Municipal support is really key, our county funds, and then charges for just things like copies, faxes, just things like that. So other, do we have anything else? We could brainstorm, but that's basically it, in a nutshell, so. On the next slide, it shows our history from 2008 forward for county funding. They've been very, very supportive. We put in the same request this year as in 2018, which is the $57,000, 042. And you can see the growth there. And then the village funding, we went through, as you can see by the chart, we started in 2008 with 162, and we're currently at 139, 118. So we're making a climb now, but we had some years where funding was lower. So in the Wisconsin library comparison slide, which is just ahead, we have, what's important about that is that this is actual library data. It's not just some pie in the sky, we want to have this much. It's, this is actual data. So four libraries with that, with the same population as we have, this municipal population, they're saying an average is 53 hours to be open, and we are open 41 to 44 hours a week. Average full-time equivalent is 4.5. We're currently at 2.62. So we're understaffed. Our per capita support is at $26.09, okay? And the average is $40.84. So we're at one of the lowest levels for municipal support in the area. So staffing and funding. All right, and growth, and I'll go with something positive. So the growth, we've been holding steady about 40,000 circulations per year, and, but our library's grown in a lot of other ways. But what I want to just do to give you a picture of that is, we have 2.62 people working, and we have 40,000 circs a year, and we have about 20,000 items in our library. So that would be like during the course of the year, that we would check everything, every item out twice. And so it's, it's quite a bit of material. It doesn't mean that that happens because we have connections to other libraries. So we're checking things out from Manasha and Nina, so that's our, our circulation for those items. I've already showed you the children's summer reading program slide, how our attendance at that has tripled, and then our Santa growth night has also grown, and it keeps growing, and I hope it continues to grow. Here's another slide of all the different programs that have been added. 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, group painting sessions, summer book club meetings, wordsmith writers club meetings, knitting club, Read Dogs as a summer programming, Girl Scout meetings, additional craft activities, and then we've also had added responsibilities like updating the library website, printing and design for summer reading program, and now with Facebook. So now it goes to the actual revenue slide. Our anticipated revenue is around 212,072. Now that, hopefully the county request will get granted at 57,042, and our, we're expecting about, close to $5,000 in copy money, lost item money, et cetera. So the two unknowns are the village funds and what to take from our reserve account. Our budgeted expenditures, when I met with Nick, were gonna total 216,920. So you can kind of look through that slide, which is the facilities portion. So we've received small increases the past couple of years, so the reserve doesn't dwindle too quickly. We need to decide what should be maintained in a reserve. I think the reserve is a good idea. It's like having a savings account at home. If something unexpected happens, then you're prepared. We have had growth in programming and added responsibilities. I've also kept budget requests very stable throughout all the years I've been here. So we just hope that the village would support an increase in funding. We've depended on county funding and our reserves when needed. And we've also anticipate the same amount from the county. We've only basically increased our staff hours the last few years, so that's something that we've done with the increase in county money, would, we've been able to at least increase what our staffing is. The library reserve, as you can tell on that slide, it says it's approximately 57,000. We've been budgeting part of the money as part of our operating budget the past few years, and so this year was budgeted 11,000 something or other, around 11,000. So I'm just looking at, library longevity should be our goal, you know, to make sure that we're around for the future. So in order to meet the current expenses, we would need the village to support us at 143,966, and that would be using the same amount of reserves as this year. And I guess I'll just end with, I mean, we're always looking for ways to improve and expand, but it, we're but it, we're kind of limited a little bit by just having a small staff. But, we try to do the best we can. And the tier... This just came out, the Wisconsin Public Library Standards. So, I'll be going over this with my library board, but that's where those numbers that I came up with are straight from that as far as comparisons. And like I said, they're actual comparisons, they're not just wishes. So, something good to keep in mind. I also gave you a couple sheets that have the per capita for around the areas. So, you can take a look at those. The one that has a lot of libraries on it, that one is a little bit older data just because in order to grab all those comparisons, it's a little bit older data. The twenty-seventeen will get entered, it's just they're a little bit behind like everything, so. So, why am I passionate about libraries? And why should you be passionate about libraries? I think it improves the quality of life in a community and it's often a social center for the community. The sharing model creates a situation where we can offer a lot. So, you could buy this, if you're on your own, you could buy this hardcover book for, well, I think it's twenty-nine dollars. So, this is what you would do for yourself on your own. If you live in a community that supports the library, you can have everything that I talked about for that same amount of money, so, actually less in this case. So, ask your community members, what does it mean to you to have a library? And if libraries are not essential, why do some of the world's smartest and richest people pour a lot of time and energy into them? So, Bill Gates, Andrew Carnegie. So, I just want to thank you. I know this has been kind of long-winded, so I just want to thank you for listening. And if you have any questions, I just welcome them, so.
Thank you, Heather. Anybody have any questions for Heather?
I just have one other question. We, I guess, admitted a request to the county, is that how that works? Is there a reason why you had to say that last year?
Yes, because basically, we figure out what our request is going to be by looking at our circulation, looking at our funding, and it's a formula that goes in and a number gets spit out. How much does the county owe us for that service? And if the county, let's say we would, they would owe us a little less this year than they did last year, they keep it the same.
Okay.
So, that's all right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Heather? Oh, Mike.
First of all, I understand how important a library is. It's a quality of life thing and it's a nice little thing for our village and our surrounding communities, not just for North Bonne Lake. The way I read the budget thing is there's spending restraints. It's based on your growth for operations. And our growth last year for the village was point three. It's like a third of a percent. And that's how much they can, we can increase our budget for operating expenses. So, in order to get more funding for the library past that point three, we'd have to take it from some other department on the operation sides. I mean, on capital, we have more flexibility. But, I mean, I don't, it's, there's spending restraint. If you don't stay under that, there's a penalty you pay and it's pretty severe. That's the way, that's the way I...
The expenditure restraint is about forty-six thousand dollars that we would lose if we didn't follow that expenditure restraint, which is very, it's separate from the tax levy increase. That's talking, looking at the entire budget. That's point three percent is the, is the, that new construction. But, that, at this point, we don't really know where that's at. It's hard to, it's, we don't know that we don't have or do have this money. So, and that's kind of how I wanted to go through the budget. So, I think the, what you're saying is mostly true, Mike, but we don't know where we're at yet.
I understand. I know the county's set there and it's almost break even for the whole operational thing. I mean, the county's just, they're doing a budget too. And it's, it's tight. I mean, it's, I think the health insurance increases for the county is pretty much sucking up their whole growth for the county. Yeah. So, that's pretty much...
The expenditure restraint.
Right, to meet that, to meet that restraint.
Yep, but that's, just so you, that is a separate issue from the point three net new construction. It's a totally different...
That's how, but that's how they base that on.
The expenditure restraint is based on your general fund budget this year, your general fund budget next year. Three point four million to three point four million. You can't raise that by a certain amount or you lose that expenditure restraint. The point three percent has to do only with the one point four million dollars of tax levy that we collect from our taxpayers. That point three percent, we can't raise that by more than our net new construction or two percent. So, it's a larger...
Yeah, I don't, you said the two percent, I don't, I don't really totally agree with you, but we'll see when the budget shakes out.
Yep.
Okay, but I, what I've known in the past, how we did things in the county, you know, it's, you helped that, you helped that levy increase though. Right, so that's, that's what I, how I feel about it. And also, I see the staffing things. I mean, we're pretty efficient. There's no question about we're efficient. What's not being done that you would need all those additional? I know you've raised your hours by about a hundred and eighty hours next year with the staffing changes. So, you got an extra hundred and eighty hours next year. So, I guess what's not being done? We're efficient, good for us, good for our library, you know, and, you know, and the data reflects back on the taxpayers what we charge them. That's my question. So...
So, what's not being done?
What's, I mean, what, you think we're understaffed. What's, what could we be doing if, let's say we were staffed at three or three and a half? What, what, what would that bring us?
I guess we don't know because when you're, when you're, when you have your daily tasks, you don't have time to think about planning extra events or doing extra things. You don't, you're limited by your daily duties. So, you know, yeah. By increasing hours, I hope to increase some things that we're doing for the library, you know? And that's something that I'll talk to the library board about.
Whoops, that's something I'll talk to the library board about too. But, like I said, we are, we are all about the same age and we're pretty efficient. But, there's physical limitations too to, you know, what we have to accomplish in a day and a week and that kind of thing. So, in the hours we have, so.
Good, thank you.
Anne?
I want to hear from Heather is, we're spending our reserve every year. And I think what she's asking for is to not dip into the reserve so much. And they use the reserve to balance their budget year after year. And after a certain point of time, that money is going to run out. So, she's looking just to kind of call into the future, if that's what I understand. And she's looking for a little bit more support from the board so that they don't have to use the reserve, you know, to balance their budget, because that's not a long-term.
Are you done, Anne? Oh, okay. I, yeah, I totally, I was going to say that, but she beat my, like, I think you totally hit it on the head. You know, that reserve is going to run out. And I think that the library and the staff and the board, you guys do a fantastic job as far as the library goes. And boy, if there's any way we can get you some more money, I mean, I'll definitely work on it and fully support it if we can feasibly do it. You know, because I think it is an important aspect of the village. You guys do a lot of wonderful programs, you know, for the kids. And I think it's a very, you know, North Bonne Lake's growing. I mean, you know, houses are selling out here and I think it's a school district and all the services and all the things that we have out here to offer and you're part of it. And, you know, I think if we can fund you as a board more than what we are right now, with it being, you know, feasibly responsible, I'm all for it. So, just know you have my support.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Where does your reserve come from? Where did that, where does this money come from?
That was...
From budgets not being spent over the past or what?
Yes, and it was built up over a number of years. So, back before I came on as a director, there was a reserve there. So, it's over time, so. And I just want you all to understand too, I basically have eight lines on the budget that I do. So, it's a combination of public works and the library budget that, so it isn't necessarily something that I budgeted over an amount and it just happened. I mean, he might say the power and light's going to be this and it's only that. You know, you just don't always know exactly, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? So, are you going to go to the library budget tonight or...
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on...
Yep.
On the library budget? Everybody get the handouts for your...
So, right now, I've just put in the use of fund balance. I kept everything the same for the revenues from the top. One thirty-nine, one eighteen would have been the village's property tax levy. And I basically used fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars of their fund balance just to balance this. So, what Heather was requesting, I believe, was keeping that the same as it was last year, which was that eleven oh seventy-two, is that correct, Heather? Which would be a shortfall of about four. I don't have the number in front of me right now.
Uh, forty-eight, forty-eight or something.
Yeah. So, just so you know, that's, it's balanced right now because of the use of the fund balance. It's how it's always kind of budgeted.
Anybody have any questions on, on the budget, on the library work budget? Or library budget?
I don't want to take a look at your budget, but...
Go ahead, Mike.
The majority, excuse me, but the majority of the amount of increases is some of the changes you guys made in August. Would that be a fair statement?
I'm sorry, what?
Would that be a fair statement? Reason why the number is so high because of the fund balance, even use issue, because of the changes you made in August for staffing. Would you agree with that or not?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't know what, do you know what he's...
Yeah, the increase of the budget is, yeah, it's largely due to the increase in the...
Oh, correct, correct, yeah. That's, right.
The high use of the fund balance, a decision the board made.
Right.
That's what's driving it.
Right.
That's okay. I just, I'm just...
Anybody have anything else? Anything else, Nicky?
I mean, I don't have anything specifically to talk about. I guess I'm looking for direction as we move forward, again, trying to go through this, not thinking too much at this point, Mike, I know it's hard to do, but just not thinking too much about where we might be with revenues and expenses and thinking more about what do we want for our village and what services do we want to provide? And that's, I would like at least some direction from the board on this as to what we feel we're comfortable with, assuming that there is money there. I mean, at this point, that's what we have to do.
My two cents, if anyone else is... So, I'm, I'm just want to fight, but I would, I would like to say with the spending restraints that Wisconsin gave us, I'd like to say with them, and I understand you can go past that, but you said a forty-five thousand dollar could be giving that up by not staying into that.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that, but I'm saying forget about all that right now. If you had, if you had a, you know, if somebody wrote us a check for a million dollars, what, what would you, what service? Obviously, we have to be somewhat aware of that, but what service would we like to provide? And what are we willing to, in this case, give to the library as part of our levy?
I'm just wondering, why are you looking for us to give it on this in particular? Or why aren't we waiting until we get everything?
Because that's how we've been going through every budget. I want to know, are you comfortable with what's in here?
I'm comfortable with what's in here.
That's all I'm asking. That's what we're doing with every budget. This one's a little unique because it has revenue with it.
Right, right, right.
But, we still have to be comfortable with everything in here. And in this case, there is a levy amount that is specifically levied for the library. So, right now Heather's asking for, to increase that by four thousand some dollars. Are we comfortable with that?
If we have the money, I would be comfortable with it.
Yeah, definitely, just what I, what I said before. I said if there was any way that we possibly could do that, I would definitely be in favor of getting that up to the one, to the one forty-three, nine sixty-six. I think, I think they work hard. I think, I think they're doing some great things. I mean, they're working on bare bones right now. I mean, still that, even at that point, that's, you know, low in my opinion. I mean, we can only do so much, but I mean, you know, if it is feasibly, you know, possible, absolutely.
Randy?
We need to support our library also. I agree with Anne and Keith. We need to support it. I mean, it's a quality of life issue, you know? I mean, we, we've got a great library down there. And I think what we, if we can, we need to do that.
Keith, I just thought, it's, you know, I mean, it's kind of like comparing apples to oranges, but I mean, it's kind of like, like the swimming pool. You know, the swimming pool is a quality of life thing for kids and things like that. And, you know, Lord knows, we don't make any money on the swimming pool with labor and, you know, everything else that goes into it. And I think, you know, the library is a, is a year-round thing. You know, where the, where the kids and adults, there's a lot of adults that don't have computers at home. You know, the faxing services that they have, the, the online courses that they have. You know, there's just an abundance of things that, that people can take advantage of out here, you know? And I just hate to see that dwindle away slowly where they would have to start cutting things or, you know, cutting hours or services or things like that. I think that would just be a real shame. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Well, I think the board has always, I've been on the board fifteen years and we've always supported libraries.
Oh, absolutely.
It's just a matter of finding the money, so it's...
Right.
And it's great to hear that everybody on the board supports that. And if we can, we'll, you know, we'll figure out a way to do it. But, I mean, you, I mean, you know that, Heather, we all, we all support the library, so if we can figure out a way to do it.
Right, appreciate that.
We're early in the process, so we'll do what we can do.
Anybody have any other questions on the library?
I'll just, so, moving forward then, is it safe that I can just assume that we'll increase the one thirty-nine to the one forty-three that she's requesting for, moving forward for now, to put everything together? Okay.
Anything else on the library? Thank you, Heather. Thank you, board, for showing up and supporting your library. All right. Moving on to public works.
My question is, how would we like to do this? Line item or section by section? Just looking at the total of the section?
It's the same one, you said in the packet, then you didn't. They put in the packet and then the separate one that came on Friday. Was it, was it two, two, three sections? Okay. So, I put the right one in?
Yeah, this is, if you go to the right here, you get the right one.
All right, cool.
I would suggest we just go through by section there.
By section?
Yeah.
I'll just pick out some highlights in the sections and you'll notice, well, the first section is the mass transit. That's the, what is that, Nick? That's the...
That's, we have to pay the city of Bonne Lake for share right, right? That would just go.
So, that pretty much is an annual cost there. Once we get into the administration part of it, you'll see the full-time wages are down. That's mainly because of the changes in the front office, the custodian service.
In this case, it's mainly because we're down one person. My old job basically is gone.
Right. But then the seasonal labor pool is going up. That's where the new custodian position is paid out of. And also, where we'd be doing what was discussed earlier about putting that seasonal position back in public works. Going down, you see some...
Can I just, so we, we added one last year, right?
Added the, took the seasonal position and made it full-time.
And now we're adding that seasonal back in?
As part of...
Yep.
The restructuring.
Restructuring.
And then, somebody, has that person been identified yet?
Nope.
Possibly going to assist?
Nope.
Another pocket?
Looking at the bottom line, my whole budget for... Looking at the bottom line, my whole budget for administration is up two hundred and fifty-four dollars.
One thing I'll mention, right, you'll see there's a, there's a signif, I won't, there's a significant increase in the health insurance number, but what I will mention is, this whole budget at this point was put together, assuming last year's payments, employee payments, for a hundred and, the hundred dollars that we just talked about last week. So all of these budgets at the end will be modified slightly, they'll be coming down that, to reflect that hundred and thirty and seventy-five. So, those health insurance numbers right now are not exact.
Any questions in the administration? Vehicle maintenance. Well, my largest increase is fuel and lubricants, and that's basically based on what I feel we're going to spend this year in fuel. And that has a total of a three thousand dollar increase between wages, but also the, the fuel. Going into streets, basically that's wages increases in there, other than a couple of small ones. And the two other small ones, both are associated with trees.
How's the tree removal coming?
Slow.
Yeah, how many trees you got left, do you think?
My last count was about a month ago, and it's about two hundred and sixty ash trees to come down yet.
Where'd we start on it?
Close to five.
Forty-something.
Five hundred and forty.
I just have a couple of questions, that painting?
Street painting?
Yep, looks like we're spending seventeen hundred this year, but we're budgeting thirty-six hundred again next year.
Yep, we'll be doing more crosswalks, and the painting supplies include glass beads for reflectivity in the crosswalks and stuff, we didn't do all of those this year.
Okay, we planned to, but we didn't get to them.
Yeah.
And then gas and electric, it looks like we're spending seventy thousand this year, but next year we're only spending sixty thousand?
Yes. Hoping with the, well, Alliant was, when I spoke to them, they were predicting a zero percent increase. And with the trend of putting in the LED lighting, it should cost less for our electric streetlights.
Okay.
Hey Darren, for the paint, did you say you're changing the type of paint you're using?
No.
We did that a few years ago, went to a latex paint instead of the oil.
So a bit more durable?
We did that, when we switched to the latex paint, the first stuff we started using, we had to repaint everything every year, and it was fading off bad, pretty bad. Brian and I found a paint that we're putting, putting down on Prospect and Winnebago and some of the crosswalks now, that we're getting two years out of the paint before we have to repaint it.
Blessing, blessing.
Any other questions in streets? Sidewalks, very small budget, that's just, if we have to replace a sidewalk, that's settled for a resident. From a utility trench or something, just to cover those costs, if it's something that we'd still, I guess you'd call it warranty from a project.
Crosswalks.
And crosswalks.
So years ago, wasn't, you guys had a service that you guys went around and did a lot of sidewalks or something?
This sidewalk program, we still do a sidewalk program.
We do that every other year?
We try to.
Yeah.
We're probably going to do one next year, but it's something we don't budget, a hundred percent assessable.
Right. And years ago, our crew tried to do it, but it took away so much of our time, back when I had a twelve-man crew, we could afford the labor to go and do that. Down with a eight-man crew, don't have the extra people.
I remember you guys used to do it, I just, I'm kind of curious, I haven't seen it while, I'm not saying that, I just was wondering.
Yeah, so it's, it's contracted out and it's fully assessable back.
The ones you marked bad, and do they have a choice of hiring somebody, or you'll hire somebody else?
Yeah, they can, they have options of how to do it. Next one is sanitation. Just tightening the number on our landfill disposal. The number's going down, that's sixty-four hundred dollars, because some of that was bulky pickup this year. And the five thousand dollars in the equipment rental, we do bulky pickup every other year, so next year, for the 2020 budget, you'll see that number climb. And weed nuisance control. Basically fifty-one dollars of the, of the fifty-six dollar increase is just the proposed increase in wages. Then we get into facilities. Yeah.
Who takes that?
I don't offer it to the crew, because I need the manpower here, I had been taking it. I opted not to last year, because this is the fourth year in a row that I haven't used on my vacation.
It's listed in here, right?
The furlough credit?
That could be, yeah, the furlough credit would be Mitch or?
Mitch.
Pete, Pete also in there?
Uh, I don't think.
No, just Mitch, I think.
Chris, Chris knows the answer.
Just Mitch. Chris is here.
What's that?
That's my bad, I should have, I kind of tried to clean up the detail and stuff. Pretty much ready for facilities then?
So, you gotta skip a bunch of pages until you get.
First one would be municipal building.
Looks again like this page.
Right, you'll see some changes in labor, doing away with the custodian and cutting the hours of cleaning, going with the twenty-hour a week.
There you go.
Custodian position, changes some of that around. And then just adjusting the, trying to base on our actual usage of sewer and water, and just trying to shore that number up completely. It looks like we're going to have a shortfall this year, so I had to increase them for next year.
I know you're going to waive the cleaning services, has that vendor been notified?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough, because it's a village resident, so.
Yeah, notified him, we had to give him thirty days' notice, we kept him through the month of September here, he'll be done as of September thirtieth. So municipal building, a total decrease of four hundred and forty, or four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Then we move on to parks and playgrounds.
Can I ask a question about the building? Just again, with the gas and electric, it looks like now we spent twenty-four thousand dollars this year, but we're budgeting twenty-six again next year?
Going to budget twenty-six again, it's all weather dependent, cold winter, we're going to spend more, a mild winter, we'll spend less. Warm summer, the AC is going to run more than a cooler summer.
So we just keep it net to the budget?
Right.
All over the place?
Part of my spreadsheet goes back and looks at other years, and our trend kind of rolls up and down, it doesn't fluctuate greatly. And that's what I did with the water, too, looked at what we spent for the first seven months of this year. Projected out what I feel we're going to use for the rest of the year, and that's where I'm going to budget it.
Yeah, but that seems like an inconsistent methodology, because one you increased and one you kept higher than the budget.
But just the way the cycle was.
You're talking about this, the gas and electric for the streets?
For the municipal building, yeah, well, for the streets, it looks like we spent more, we put it down to sixty. But I'm saying for water, he raised it to nineteen hundred, because this year we're at about nineteen hundred, but for gas and electric, he kept it at the budget, even though our actuals are less than.
But some, some of the gas and electric was, we changed, putting more efficient furnace in.
But wouldn't those all be reasons to decrease it?
It should, yes, let me double-check that number.
Okay, sorry. I mean, it's just something we can kind of keep in, in mind.
You're right, because looking at our two thousand seventeen actual, it was low, too.
Right.
The other thing you don't see on here that Darren has, I put on his budget, is the two thousand and sixteen actual, that is not shown on your budget. I have no idea what that number said at this point, but that also plays into some of these numbers when we look back at two or three years of past history.
Budget books all the way back to two thousand and ten.
Yeah, it's a guessing game, I know, and we don't really know how much we're going to spend on gas and electric, and it's weather dependent, like you said, but, and that maybe would be something to think about.
And, one thing I should bring, bring back up, the streets, gas and electric, that pays for also the power pole replacements. Which we did buy four power poles this year out of that budget. One that got hit on Harrison Street that we replaced, and we had a minimum order to meet, to be shipped from California. So we have extra power poles now, that, if it happens again, we have spares.
Talking about the power pole or street light?
Or, street light, I'm sorry, street light. Any other, any questions in the parks and playgrounds then?
Is the equipment holding up, for the most part?
Yeah, for the most part, right, had to replace that one at Lemieux, that one section there, otherwise, we're replacing swings, swing seats. Just stuffing our general maintenance of the parks.
Is that stuffing up in this park holding up well?
Yes.
Cool.
Swimming pool facility, biggest thing I see in that one is the shop and cleaning supplies needing to be increased. Because of the amount we budgeted, or that got put in the budget last year. We were way over that the year before, I'm not sure, one hundred percent sure how that happened, but I feel we need to increase that, because we are doing cleaning a little bit different over there, with some of the rubber mats that were put in. They need to sanitize those a little bit differently. And then community center, you'll see the decrease of the janitorial service. Increase in the labor because of the custodian getting put back in that class. And then garage. Largest increase there is our gas and electric, just to cover what I think we are going to spend. But, we still do heat our garage with waste oil until we run out of waste oil. So, we try not to use the gas until we absolutely have to.
Why is it a spike in the water, what changed on the garage?
When we put that, when the street was redone, we put in that two-inch water service for washing the garbage truck, instead of running that out to get washed all the time. Yep.
We have water now, that's what changed.
We have, we have water flow now, and the other thing is, we used to always run the street sweeper out to the business park to wash it with a fire hose. Now we have a two-inch line at the garage, but it's metered now, instead of estimating lost water to put in the PSE report. And then, my next one would be the library facility. Again, the decrease in the janitorial service, the increase in the labor pool would be the custodian hours spent there.
That's one I handed out, it's part of the library budget, it's, it's in the library budget.
Yeah, it's the second page of the library budget.
Sorry, yeah, different section. Does everybody find it, second page of the library?
Yep.
So, overall increase of the library's facility budget of a decrease of twenty-three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Any questions on library? Then we can go on to the EMS house.
I had handed that out tonight also, new EMS budget. Second page, well, if you put the new one in there.
You put it in your book.
Second page.
Second page of that, bottom section. Just adjusting a few numbers. There's another water usage one that I feel we're going to have a shortfall estimating this year, short those numbers up slightly. And. Yeah. But, overall, a decrease of three hundred and eighty-four dollars in my budget for facility over there.
Wouldn't the IT network go down? Just losing a ton of money, I just kind of curious what changed over there that, that.
I don't know that answer off the top of my head. And I'm just looking, based on last year's expense of three eighty-four, my guess is it was over budgeted, but I'd have to dig into that more, Mike.
You're right, the budget was too high, and it was, seventeen was three eighty-four, I think you're kind of right there.
Yeah.
So, in a nutshell, that's what I take care of in the budget.
Any other questions for Darren? If not, that concludes number two of our discussion on public works and library budgets. Moving on, discussion and possible action on approving additional funds for fire bay exhaust system.
Yeah, I could talk about that, so, we got word back from FEMA and the AFG Grand Assistance Firefighters Grant. And we received a total of forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars from the federal government. With our share being two thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars for a total of forty-eight thousand. Quote that we got and submitted to the AFG grant was just over sixty-eight thousand. Making it a difference of roughly twenty-two thousand dollars.
Just, Jake, one second, I just handed something around, it's, it's for this discussion, but there's actually, the write-up he's discussing was in the board packet, yeah.
So, what we're willing to do is, they recommend that, whether it's gas or diesel, they get the exhaust system, but we're willing to work with five oh seven, whether we don't park it in the bay or not, to drop that, the connections down to five, and ask for the difference, to get those five connections in there for all the diesel vehicles. What FEMA did is they quoted it at eight thousand dollars per connection, and our quote from the dealer was eleven thousand three seventy-seven, I believe, was the total. So, that's the difference, that's why we didn't get awarded the sixty-eight thousand dollars that we asked for.
If I may add to that, Jake, remind me if I'm correct, it was about thirty-five hundred dollars originally, that we had thought?
Yes, that it would have cost us.
If you recall, when we applied for this grant, Jake had asked the board to approve applying for the grant, there was about thirty-five hundred dollars the village was going to be responsible for, and if I remember right. Mike, well, I believe you even made the comment that. uh, Mike, Will, I believe you even made the comment that to see if we could take it out of the operating, if there was money left over, we'd use their operating funds, but otherwise the village would, would fund that. Now, with the changes, it's actually about thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars that, so it's in addition of about ten thousand dollars of additional funds that would be required from the village. What I handed out was just to give you an idea of where we're sitting with the two thousand and eighteen capital expenses. And Jake, I didn't get your copy of this, but basically, if you look way down at the bottom, we're gonna probably have about a hundred thousand dollars, it says ninety-six, eight ninety-four of capital, borrowed capital funds left from this year's capital. Now, if we don't spend, I'm not suggesting we need to spend it all. We don't, certainly don't need to spend it all, but whatever we don't spend will get carried over to later this year. Um, we'll do a borrow for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty, later in two thousand and nineteen we'll be doing a borrow. So whatever's available in this capital reserve fund, at that time we'll reduce that borrow. But we do have currently sitting in our funds about a hundred thousand dollars that'll be sitting there. So if we were going to move forward with this, I would suggest that's the funds we use. It's definitely a capital expense.
Anybody have any questions? Mike?
The PD, the thirty-one thousand for the PD car, I mean, that's gonna be pushed off to the following year, but we don't borrow-
No.
We don't borrow that money until it's two thousand-
You're right. Sorry. Finish what you're-
I'm, I'm thinking that, okay, let me make sure I say this right. Uh, this is the second half of the borrow, right?
Correct. Uh, no, it's the, it's the, yes, yes.
It's the second half, so-
Yes.
The nineteen, so we're gonna have to cover that, the-
No, because that nineteen, what Darren's presenting, that thirty-one thousand dollars is part of the twenty nineteen borrow.
Right.
So that's separate from this.
But we gotta, we gotta pay for that.
But we, we do that with all of our projects. We, we have enough money in our reserves to pay for those projects upfront, and then we do the borrow late in the year for the two years and refund the general fund that, that, those monies. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we could take it out if we wanted to, right?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And that's what we do. We would spend those capital dollars that are available if we have purchases. Chris, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously we have plenty of funds to cover any expenses, and our reason we do the borrow so late in the year is obviously we just wanna make a interest payment. We don't want to have to make a principal in interest. If, if we did have the funds available, we would do the borrow earlier in the year, but we always have enough funds available to do that, so it just kind of saves us on costs too. We, we're only paying interest for a short amount of time in twenty nineteen versus if we did borrowing also in the beginning of twenty nineteen, we'd, you know, it would accrue more interest for that.
Nick and Chris, was that a year or two years ago when, um, who does our audit?
Baker Tilly?
Baker Tilly. Yeah, Baker Tilly suggested that we spend some of it, and I got radios, bought them a year ahead of what we had originally planned. I think, uh, they bought a DPW truck. Um, it's kind of the same thing.
Well, you can't, you can't, we can't sit and collect interest on borrowed money that we use for capital. Obviously, there's, we, these are all estimates when we obviously borrow, so we obviously have to spend these funds. We don't have to sit on them, but like Nick said, we will, it'd be nice to reduce our borrow, not that we'll buy a bunch of things to spend the money, let's reduce our borrow. So we, we, it's, you know, our debt service payment is a lot less.
Randy?
Gee, so you said five oh seven is going to, is not, is not part of this vehicle that's gonna, would, would, so that's gonna be parked outside?
Yeah.
Five oh seven is the command vehicle, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And if you were to put, is there room in the bay for five oh seven right now?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and what would the cost be increased by to have a hookup for that?
Total cost would be twenty-two thousand three oh three, twenty-five.
Just for that extra vehicle you're looking at?
At sixty-eight, and the difference being the forty-five thousand from the grant.
And your staff is okay with having that vehicle sit, go back outside again?
If we need to.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I'll just open a question. That doesn't mean that vehicle can't be inside, does it? I mean, you can't have it sitting there running, you know, but-
Correct, yeah.
Doesn't mean the vehicle can't sit in the garage.
Correct, yes. Next question I got is- Because we run a lot of our diesel vehicles a lot more in the apparatus bay. Our engines sit in there, you know, a cou- few minutes every single day running.
My question is by, you know, let's say if we don't do all the work, why do we have to give up the forty-eight thousand to grant for the whole thing? I just, I just-
Because that's what we wrote the grant for.
Okay.
So we can't write a grant and then all of a sudden, say, radios or whatever, um, we wanna go buy them instead, you can't, can't do that. We wrote the grant for a specific item.
No, I appreciate reaching out. I mean, it's a, it's a big ticket item that you've got a lot of funding for that, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's about a third of our fire budget.
I just kind of curious, like, if you don't do it all, you can't have the money. I'm just kind of curious what that was all about.
What do you, what do you mean by, I mean, they, they don't have-
On that, on that, uh, option, option number two.
Yeah, second option, I put the denied a grant total of forty-eight thousand.
We didn't spend a, we didn't pay the difference, we'd have to deny it, right?
Oh, right, yeah. Are you suggesting to do a smaller project, Mike, because I'm-
No, I didn't, I would just, I just wanted to, I didn't understand why, you know, we didn't do all the work, why we gotta give up the forty thousand. I'm not suggesting-
Got it, yep. Specific for this.
Any other questions for Jake?
I could add to the discussion. I just would, I, I know the police department and everybody that works in this building, especially the police department, would strongly encourage the board to move forward with this because it's, when they run those engines back there, the whole building smells like diesel smoke. Um, I think it's a great opportunity to not have to fund the full sixty thousand dollars and, and get it done, because I think, if I recall, we even talked about it, that the, the board had talked about if we didn't get the grant, we really need to look at budgeting for it anyways, because it's something that really need, should be done.
Do you have something, Mike?
I just have a question. I just wanted to make sure I understand. You submitted the grant for six? And you're only gonna do five, that's what it is?
Correct, yeah. Yep.
I mean, could we do four and still keep the money? I mean, why?
No, because the one that we would be able to get rid of is not run often in the bay. So that would be why. You know, our ambulances sit in the bay, and we start them up in the bay, our engines sit in the bay, they get, uh, their inspections done every day inside of the bay, and they don't go outside, so the five of them would need it, absolutely.
But the five of them don't have it now, though, right?
Correct, which that's the problem.
Which is creating the problem in the building here.
Sure.
It's more of a safety issue.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve, purchase and pay the difference of thirteen, eight, twenty. That would go against this year's extra cap.
Yeah, I would suggest to make a part of your motion that we would basically amend the capital budget to reflect that for two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, I don't support putting that gas vehicle online right now. That seems to be off pricey by getting the diesel, so I don't get it.
Okay, what was the motion again, Mike? I'm sorry.
Um, I make a, a motion to purchase the, the exhaust system and pay the difference of the thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars on the ventilation system.
I'll second that motion.
With the capital, fund balance.
Funding from level two thousand.
Thank you.
Can I, can I say something?
And, yeah, any more discussion?
Did, did, how many quotes did you get when you got this? And why do they say it should only cost eight thousand, and we think it, or we got a quote for eleven?
Uh, I don't need to begin, to begin.
I would figure, Richard, that we went with three, but we went with higher recommendation from the surrounding fire departments and the most often, it was, it was several of them did. Uh, they weren't the lowest bidder, but they were the best quality, uh, from what we were told.
They had closest to us.
Yes.
What was the lowest bidder?
I don't know, man.
They were all over the, uh, a thousand dollars.
Per install?
It wasn't eight thousand dollars, I can tell you that. The difference wasn't three thousand. Yeah.
So we're not obligated to take like a lowest bid like we do for like streets or something like that?
Well, I, I briefly talked about Jake with that. It sounded like the research was, they went through the grant process, but it sounded like you had to submit the quote with the grant as part of the grant.
Yeah, yeah. The, uh, town of Finalak, city of Finalak, uh... City, yeah, all of these fire departments, this is the company that they went through, so.
Well, did anybody go through the person that you didn't pick?
That's it?
Did you hear bad things about the people you didn't pick, or you just heard good things about the person you picked?
Not gonna defame someone's company, but, um, uh, yeah, I mean, we heard a lot of good things about this company. I'll say that, so.
Okay.
Could you provide us with a difference of the cost? I mean, we can't change it, we can't change the thing, but just for the board-
Yeah.
Information, just provided. It sounds like we can't change it, we've submitted that, so I guess we'd just like to know.
Yep.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? So we got a motion by, um, Will, second by Streeter, to approve, um, that funding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Aye in the second, yes. Discussion of personnel policy chapters thirty-two through thirty-seven.
And I lied, I, I told you last week I was gonna put this on the end, and I, item number five kind of came in at the end after I had the agenda put together, so I would suggest if you want to talk about number five first, we do that, so we know how much time you want to talk about personnel policy, or do you?
Does anybody have a problem with us moving up number five? Anybody? All right?
Is that a closed session?
Excuse me?
No, no, just a discussion on the benefits handbook.
No. Employee benefits handbook.
Oh.
We'll just knock that one out.
Okay.
So we'll do number five first. So, uh, discussion of possible action on employee benefits handbook.
These, literally, we got about four forty-five, five o'clock today, so, uh, we've been waiting from McConne to get some of this stuff to us. A lot of this hinged on the fact that we just passed the employees' portions last week, so we got those numbers to them, so we're kind of waiting on them, that's why we had them printed out for you tonight. So if you look at these, this is what I was referring to last week, we talked about personnel policy. We've removed, tried to remove all of the benefit insurance type stuff from our personnel policy, so we can simply update this benefit guide. The other nice thing about this is when we have a new hire or any employee that's here, you can hand them this, and they have most of their benefits that they really have questions about. So if you look at, they all look very similar, except right in the, above the picture on the front, you'll see it's twenty to twenty-nine hours, thirty to thirty-nine hours, and forty plus hours, so based on that, there's a lot of information in here, a lot of it's-
I didn't understand, I was wondering, I was wondering, I've got too many.
Yeah.
Do you have?
And I, I actually, we haven't done this yet, but I'm actually gonna suggest, Chris, I was gonna talk to you about this tomorrow, to make these different colors at least, because it's hard to just look for those numbers, and actually, I'm just gonna suggest we put them in different colors this, when we print them, because they shouldn't look so similar. Um, but I guess we can start with the forty hours a week. There's just, there's a lot of information in here about eligibility, how to enroll, your elections for open enrollment. I mean, really, the, tries to capture all of the plans we have here and what's involved. The network health insurance information on page five, and some of their information that they provide. But really, the most part of this is, is kind of explanation, excuse me. And the really, the things that will have to change annually mostly is gonna be the last page, and that's where you'll see the actual dollar amounts for the employees portion, and that's really what we're approving. We're gonna approve all of these as they are. It's part of, going to be part of our personnel policy. But it, I know it's hard to read, it's very small print on the last page, and you'll see that we've updated the deduction for paycheck for the health insurance to seventy-five and one thirty, I don't know. You're looking at the forty hour one, that's what it says, seventy-five and one thirty, and then there's also the POS HSA, the point of service, that's a different plan employees are offered. It's a more expensive plan that they have to pay more for. And then, the other portion that the employee pays for is the Delta Dental. They pay four dollars or twelve dollars per month based on what they want. Superior, Superior Vision, that is a hundred percent paid for by the employee. Those are the elective amounts. And then, everyone here gets one time their salary as life insurance. You're able to increase that if you want. There's a cost for that. Uh, those costs are not on here, because it's based on age and health and a bunch of other things. And then there's the Transamerica, that's another elective insurance, insurance that we will learn about. We have a meeting, insurance meeting with McConne on Wednesday. So that's, that's kind of the, real, that's really with the details that'll get changed annually, depending on what the board decides. Now, if you look at the other, the tw- thirty to thirty-nine hours, we're required to offer insurance to those employees, health insurance, the same plans. However, we only are required by law to pay half of what we pay for a single plan for a full-time employee. So you'll see that their, did I say that right, Chris? Their deductions per paycheck are significantly higher, and that's why. That's what we're required to offer by the laws. Everything else is, is pretty much the same, except again, the benefit that we provide as a municipality is much less. And then the twenty to twenty-nine hours, we don't, Chris, we don't have to offer them health insurance, correct? Saying that correct? So there, they just have some of those elective things they're allowed to do Delta Dental, which they pay for, or the Superior Vision, and the voluntary life insurance, Transamerica, but they pay for all of that. So if there's questions, ask those. Otherwise, I would, I was hoping for basically approval of all three of these and making them part of our, as an, as an den- uh, an exhibit to our personnel policy.
Did you used to have a booklet before?
No.
Nothing at all? Nothing at all, or?
We didn't have a benefit booklet. It was all just spelled out in personnel policy, and it was, it's not the easiest thing to find at all, this information. This is much better way to do it.
Uh, Mike?
I mean, you asked my question, like, I mean, you know, here to come to the meeting, also get the information provided, just we got the board on it. Is there something pressing that we need to hold on to tonight?
Well, these insurances are starting October first.
Yep.
So, yes.
I understand, we've already made that decision.
And I, I, I know where you're coming from.
But you said four, 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 four fifteen, you're something, hey, you got this, or whatever, four forty-five, I get it, because I'm thinking myself, even a little bit, I think, how can we get a copy of this stuff, you know, so?
And I apologize. I mean, that's, that's just, it was kind of unavoidable, um, but that's what, that's the scenario we ended up in. Uh, I can tell you that really the only major change to this is upping the, the payments.
Pretty much, we're just voting, I mean, on the back page here with-
Yes.
Cost of the employees. I understand, it breaks down the benefit package and, and of the plan and all that stuff, so we're pretty much voting on, and very much on the less than twenty-nine, the twenty-nine.
No. Yeah, I mean, you're just approving the, the two thousand and nineteen rates, that the employees will pay. And I can tell you that the dental, that's the only other one that the village pays for part of the dental, that, that was, it went up the annual, is that a monthly or annual? It went up by, it's a monthly, it went up by seventy dollars, and it's like four thousand dollars a month. So it went up less than, you know, one and a half percent or so. And the employees are paying four and twelve respectively for those plans.
Keith, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Um, our, what's the Omaha?
That is the new company we're working for, short and long-term stability.
Those went down. I was just gonna look, that cost went down this year.
And then it's just a second year, so.
Yep. So we should have most of our insurances taken care of now.
Anybody have any other questions? Let's board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve benefit guides, um, with these two make up different colors, all three of them, for easier.
I got a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by King, second by Price, to approve the employee benefit handbooks. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. All right, well, what is the board's pleasure tonight? Do we want to go through policy chapters? We do have a closed session tonight. It's, uh, it's related to board's pleasure.
Myself personally, I would rather not. I would rather just go into closed session.
Man?
I'm okay with just going into closed session.
Let's, um, what's, we're gonna get, postpone, thank you. All right, we'll postpone, um, discussion of personnel policy chapters thirty-two through thirty-seven. Uh, we do have one resolution before we go into closed session, discussion of possib- or possible action on approving resolution eleven dash twenty eighteen, a resolution establishing replacement fund for collection system and operations and maintenance manual.
This is a resolution that I have to have to, uh, submit our Wisconsin DNR C-MR report. Uh, it's an annual resolution that I bring before you, uh, just how we disperse our money for replacement of equipment in wastewater. how we disperse our money for replacement of equipment in wastewater. And the C-MOR report is a, kinda, works kinda like a report card. Um, they look at what we do for maintenance and replacement of our wastewater system, collection system.
Anybody have any questions on this resolution? I'll make the motion to approve Resolution eleven-dash-two thousand and eighteen. A second?
I'll second it.
I got a motion by Streeter, second by King, to approve Resolution eleven-dash-two thousand and eighteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. All right, any communications? Any new business? Need a motion to go into closed session, please?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session. Uh, number one, Discussion of Possible Action under Wisconsin D.C. statutes nineteen point eight-five, print one, print E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds and/or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reason, we call it a closed session. E, nor indicate business part.
I got a second, please.
I'll second that.
I got a roll call vote.
King?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.